Good evening and welcome to the City of Battle Creek, Michigan in the Battle Creek City Commission Meeting for September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It is seven o'clock. Welcome. First of all, we will have a moment of silence for our invocation and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance. The moment of silence will be done as a group here and then I'm going to ask our vice mayor to lead us in the prayer or the pledge, excuse me. So at this time, please stand for a moment of silence and then we'll do our pledge led by the vice mayor, Sophia. Vice Mayor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Sophia. Next item on our agenda is roll call. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Commissioner Kotarski-Smith.
Here.
Commissioner LaCoss.
Here.
Commissioner Lance.
Here.
Commissioner Morris. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia. Here, thank you.
And Mark's here, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Banky. Sorry.
Next item on our agenda is proclamations and awards. We have some beautiful Battle Creek awards. We believe two of the recipients are here. And then, let's see, what else do we have? We have two proclamations, one for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, two thousand twenty-five, and then there's a proclamation for Crazy for the Kazoo, two thousand twenty-five. So let's begin with the beautiful Battle Creek awards.
So Mayor, this evening from N C eleven Ward four, we have a nomination for the Miller Foundation at three ten Wawa Tacy Way. From N P C three Ward four, a nomination for Executive Growth Properties at three seven three Riverside Drive. N P C three Ward four nomination for Deanna Vaughn at four fifty-three Wentworth Avenue. N P C five Ward one nomination for James Combs, eighteen Ridgemore. N P C five Ward one nomination for Paws and Claws at thirteen seventy West Michigan Avenue. Okay, and then finally, N P C eleven Ward four nomination for Eugenia Macias Enriquez and Jonah Hurtado Macias at five thirty-seven Riverside Drive.
Well, I see the Miller Foundation, so why don't you come up and give us some history on the Miller Foundation, how many years they've been there? You always maintain their property. It's impeccable. So I appreciate you being here. Right here.
Okay. Sure. So in nineteen sixty-three, the Miller Foundation became the Miller Foundation of that property. It was actually in the forties that Mr. Miller actually had built the foundation there, the building that most people know from the road Riverside there. We've always thought it was very important to make sure we keep up with the neighbors and keep it beautiful. And these wonderful men, Mike and John, are the ones who have been taking care of our property landscaping lawn for twenty years, over twenty years now. And so, thank you. Roots Lawn, Roots, Roots Lawn, sir. Real sorry. I always just call it Roots. I don't ever say the wrong words. It's just Roots. So it's just, we're thankful to be a part of Battle Creek and upkeep it, so.
Have any of the Millers ever lived on the property?
Yes, so the first property was actually, or the first building on the property was the lodge, which was down by the water. Those who've been around for a long time would remember that. Unfortunately, ended up with mold in it and it had to be torn down. But the one that's the foundation now was Bob Miller's and his first wife's house. And they moved there when their kids were teenagers. And then, when his first wife passed, he remarried and built the second house on the property. So they did live there for quite a few years.
Now, if you need to add your history lesson, it's very important to hear.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Congratulations, Ms. Penn. We appreciate your hard work, too. Thanks. All right, we will get these awards to the rest of the people.
Mayor, I believe that we have another beautiful Battle Creek recipient here.
Oh, yes, Hans and Alicia. I'm sorry. Executive Growth Properties LLC. Congratulations. Thank you both of you for saving this building. Hans, could you tell us just a little bit about your goals when you first purchased the piece of property? You told me one time about the bees that were there.
Well, first of all, thank you to City of Battle Creek for this beautification award. Me and Alicia purchased this property in two thousand and nineteen. Of course, most, it's a home that was loved by a lot of Battle Creek residents, had been boarded up for over forty years. I made myself some notes. And so, when we purchased the property, it was about trying to preserve the history of it. The Shepherd House was built in eighteen fifty-two, so it's pre-Civil War. And like I said, it'd been boarded up for over forty years. So we purchased the house. We spent over two hundred thousand dollars in restoration on the property. So, and there's a reason I say that, is I bought the property from the Calhoun County Land Bank in an auction thing with the intention of restoring the place. So I actually have a personal office there. I'm retired, we're retired. And the two hundred thousand dollars that we spent, actually, I pay more in city property taxes today than I bought the house for. So, that's not a negative thing, it's just, it's true. So, so the only other thing I want to say about the property, it might be a little out of line, but I back up to the Riverside property, Riverside Country Club property. So I would ask these city commissioners to...
That's fine. You can do that.
I'd ask these city commissioners to not change the zoning on that because it certainly would affect our investment into that property. Since I have the microphone. Again, we love Battle Creek and thank you, city commissioners, for all you do.
Hans and Alicia, we thank you very much for your contributions, just not in that property, for your property up on Capitol Avenue northeast. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Deanna Vaughn, are you here? No, no, Deanna Vaughn, right. How about James W. Combs? Paws and Claws, finishing touch? Our, and our last one, five thirty-seven Riverside Drive, beautiful home. We'll make sure we get these to everyone. Next item on our agenda is a couple of proclamations, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Do we have any? Yes, please come forward. Could one of you just say a few words about this?
So on September twenty-seventh, we're going to have Walk the Walk for Breast Cancer. It's a great partnership between our restaurants in town, between Lucky Rooster and One Nation. Folks get to walk from one restaurant to the next, right down Columbia Avenue. You will see a sea of pink. We're really excited because it supports the five Cs, the five Cs, which is the Cancer Care Control Coalition in Calhoun County and Kalamazoo. But all the funding stays right here in Calhoun County. So hopefully, everybody can come out, wear your pink, and join us at ten a.m.
Well, thank you very much. I like this idea. Just please be careful on Columbia. It seems like Columbia is becoming our Indianapolis five hundred in Battle Creek. So, once again, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Battle Creek, we would like to present you this proclamation. And if we could have a picture taken, it looks like we have one of the officers there. Thank you very much. Good luck. The next one is the Crazy for the Kazoo. Do we have a group of people? Yes, we do. Are you prepared to say a couple of things?
Looks like you. I'm Bessie. I'm with the City of Battle Creek in the Environmental Department. We're coming up on about twenty-four years now. We've done the annual Crazy for the Kazoo. First Saturday in October has been the date. So, once again, this Saturday coming up, October fourth, we're going to meet at Willard Beach. We're changing locations because, I mean, it's got a pavilion and picnic tables, so we'll have donuts and coffee. We do ask if you can register. That would be great. You can register at BCwater.org, or you can reach out to me at DPW. It's from eight to eleven. We start early so we can have a Saturday. So please come out. We'll have t-shirts while supplies last, and it'll be a good time.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your work. Once again, if you kind of register online, maybe you'll be here early and thankful.
Yep, thank you.
So on behalf of the citizens of Chicago.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is chair noting in the added or deleted resolutions.
A proclamation was added to the original agenda, which we've already taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is petitions, communications, and reports.
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, when you're ready for the first public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on an application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, or N E Z, certificate on behalf of Northeast Property Group LLC for the property located at one nineteen West Van Bearin Street and fifty-seven McCamley Street, Battle Creek, Michigan, in Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, R D twelve.
I'll declare the public hearing open. Are there any comments at our public hearing for the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is another public hearing, Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or CAPER, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development detailing how the city spent community development block grant and home investment partnership federal funding in program year two thousand twenty-four.
Declare the public hearing open. Are there any public comments at this time? Are there any public comments? We'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any meeting agenda items. If you have, if you'd like to make public comment regarding any remaining agenda item, please raise your hand and we will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You will have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before beginning your comment and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. At this time, are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Next item on our agenda is introduction of ordinances, ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This ordinance includes various amendments to Chapter twelve sixty-three signs of the zoning code, including amendments allowing for flexibility with regard to sign sizes within the area known as the motor mile. Additional proposed amendments include sign setback requirements to allow increased flexibility, establishment of a maximum size for directional signs not requiring a permit, and formatting of the regulations chart for improved readability.
I move for the introduction of ordinance one five dash two zero two five.
Second.
Been moved and supported to introduce ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments by the commission? Yes, Commissioner?
I'd just like to thank, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the planning commission for coming up with some good changes to help with the signing down that road that we're missing. So we're all in conformity with all the other businesses. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on the introduction of ordinance?
I think I'm going to have to push it again, just because it disappeared from my screen.
Okay, but it was all approved, right?
Yes, it was.
All right. Introduction of ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is adoption of ordinances. Ordinance two thirty-seven, ordinance, excuse me, oh eight dash twenty twenty-five.
This proposed ordinance seeks to repeal Section seventeen of Chapter eight eight two, Real Estate Taxation, which granted a payment in lieu of taxes to Sophia Square.
I move for the adoption of ordinance zero eight dash two zero two five.
Second.
So moved and supported to approve or adopt ordinance oh eight dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments by the commission? All right, seeing none, would you please vote on the adoption of ordinance oh eight twenty twenty-five? The adoption of ordinance oh eight twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution two thirty-eight, adopting ordinance oh nine dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to repeal Section eighteen of Chapter eight eight two, Real Estate Taxation, which granted a payment in lieu of taxes regarding Hamlin Opera House.
I move for the adoption of ordinance zero nine dash two zero two five.
Second.
Been moved and supported to adopt ordinance oh nine twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on adopting ordinance oh nine twenty twenty-five? The resolution adopting ordinance oh nine twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution to adopt ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to repeal Section twenty-four of Chapter eight eighty-two, Real Estate Taxation, which granted a payment in lieu of taxes to Manchester Place.
I move for the adoption of ordinance ten dash two zero two five.
Second.
So moved and supported to approve resolution adopting ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on adopting ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five? Next item on the agenda is resolution adopting ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five, and my interim city manager says there may be some additions needed here. So please stay tuned. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to add Section twenty-five to Chapter eight eighty-two, Real Estate Taxation, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the Bennett Crossing Development.
I move for the adoption of ordinance eleven dash two zero two five.
Second.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution adopting ordinance eleven twenty twenty-five. Ted, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, Mayor, my understanding is that MISHDA is requiring some small language changes since it was introduced at our last meeting. And actually, I think I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney and the community services director. They can provide a bit more detail.
Yes, I believe that the proposed amendment has been circulated to all the members of the commission. There's a clean copy and a red line so you can see kind of what the changes are, but there's no real substantive changes to the proposed ordinance here in terms of the terms of the pilot or anything like that. They're largely either what I'd call Scrivener's type changes here. And MISHDA did indicate that they would prefer that these, the amended version be adopted by the commission if so chose.
Okay, Community Services Director?
Nothing additional to add. We did receive this information from Spire today. So I do appreciate the city attorney's office expedite it so that you were able to get a clean copy of that this week.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions by the commission, or did we approve the resolution adopting?
I think procedurally, somebody on the commission would need to move to amend Resolution two forty to the amended version here, and then you would then move to adopt the amended resolution.
Okay. Can we have someone amend, please?
I move to amend the adoption two four A dash two D of ordinance eleven dash two zero two five.
Second.
It's been moved to amend and then support adopting ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions by the commission? Could you please vote on the amendment, please? Yes. Everything all right? Okay. Would you please vote on the amendment, please? The amendment has been approved. We're now back to the resolution adopting ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions by the commission? Okay, now if we get all these housings approved, all of our problems go away. So, all right. Would you please vote on resolution adopting ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five? The resolution adopting ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution adopting ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance, number twelve dash twenty twenty-five, seeks to add Section twenty-six to Chapter eight eight two, Real Estate Taxation, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the Liberty Commons Apartments and Town Homes Project.
I move for the adoption of ordinance twelve dash two zero two five.
Second.
So moved and supported to approve resolution adopting ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments or questions or concerns by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on the resolution adopting ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five? Resolution adopting ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution two four two, adopting ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to amend Section two twenty point oh eight, renaming streets of Chapter two twenty administration generally by updating names of organizations and titles of staff required to review an application for renaming a street, adding names of the heritage streets and preventing their renaming, and repealing Section two twenty point oh nine commemorative designation.
I move for the adoption of ordinance thirteen dash two zero two five.
Second.
So moved and supported to approve resolution adopting ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments or questions by the commission? Hearing none or not seeing any, please vote on the resolution adopting ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. Resolution adopting ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution two forty-three.
This proposed ordinance seeks to rezone five properties bounded between Main Street, Bartlett Street, and Willis Street from their current zoning classification of T-three Neighborhood Commercial District to T-four Downtown Commercial District due to the existing character and uses in the area in an order to prepare the property for potential future development pursuant to Section twelve eighty-one point oh one of the zoning code. Said parcels include the following: one twenty Main Street, twenty-nine, thirty-three, and thirty-seven Bartlett Street, and one twelve Main Street.
I move for the adoption of ordinance fourteen dash two zero two five.
Second.
So moved and supported to approve resolution adopting ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five. Are any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on the resolution adopting ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five? The ordinance, the resolution adopting ordinance fourteen dash twenty five, twenty twenty-five has been approved. Next item on the agenda is commission comment. Next item on the agenda is commission comment regarding meeting business.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The movement supported to approve the consent agenda. Is there any comments by the commission, Commissioner?
So is this an opportunity to talk about any meeting business or just the consent agenda now that it has been moved and supported?
Looks like there's just a consent agenda.
Are we after that able to ask for a point of clarification on another previous resolution? Thank you, well, we'll go ahead, please.
You want to ask a question?
Not about the consent agenda, about a previous item on our agenda. This is time for commission comment regarding meeting business.
All right, you want to wait till commission comments to do that?
Not at the end, no.
Not at the end? Do it now, then.
Okay, so I, I need some clarification from the clerk on the very first thing that we introduce, introduction of ordinances fifteen twenty twenty-five. I, I may have been a little bit late logging in. I did not get prompted to vote on this, and then it was not displayed, and so I'm quite, not quite sure what the results were on that.
So it showed that you had not joined yet, and that's why you couldn't vote. But then that is the one where all of a sudden my screen kind of like interrupted itself, and everything went away. But we had seen that everybody had voted except for you, and everybody had voted affirmatively.
So you didn't need me, and it passed?
No.
Okay. I was here, but anyway, it, it, and I should have spoke up at the, at the time.
If you want to, we can go back, and we can push the vote again if you'd like.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. I was going to vote in affirmative anyway. I just wanted a point of clarification on the meeting business because it never was displayed, and I didn't get the opportunity, and I wondered what the malfunction was, so.
Yeah, it just showed you had not joined the meeting.
No, no, there's not necessary to revote. It passed, I was gonna vote for it, and you didn't need me anyway, so.
We're gonna put your vote down as affirmative.
That, or S seven, good, we can proceed. Sorry for the interruption, but I just wasn't sure where to bring this up.
Sometimes you gotta be on top of it.
And I'm sure our gadflies were gonna talk about it in the comments anyway. So, no, you can't do a point of order, sir, sit down, sit down.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda, we're back to commission comments regarding meeting business. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, would you please vote on the consent agenda? Consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution two forty-six. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution approves a neighborhood enterprise zone certificate on behalf of Northeast Property Group LLC for the property located at one-nineteen West Van Buren Street and fifty-seven McCamley Street in Neighborhood Enterprise Zone RD twelve.
Move to approve resolution number two forty-six.
Second.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution two forty-six. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution, resolution two forty-six? Resolution two forty-six has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution two forty-seven. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution authorizes the city manager to execute a grant agreement for the twenty twenty-six Medicaid Childhood Health Improvement Program, also known as CHIP, Lead Hazard Control Program for one million three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and to execute a subrecipient agreement with community action to act as a partner in implementing the lead abatement program in Calhoun County. This authorization for the city manager includes any amendments that might be necessary to add additional funding to the agreements.
Move to approve resolution number two forty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and supported to approve resolution two forty-seven. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution two forty-seven? Resolution two forty-seven has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution two forty-eight. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into a supportive services agreement with the Transportation Authority of Calhoun County.
Move to approve resolution number two forty-eight.
Second.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution two forty-eight. Are there any comments by the commission on resolution two forty-eight? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution two forty-eight? Resolution two forty-eight has been approved. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the city commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to then come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address prior to be making the comment. Are there any general public comments at this time? Yes, David?
I've been realizing to the meaning there's complications. You know, we made some changes here the last couple of months. And even people were in the city here, arguing, audience here, getting confused over some of this matter. And there's changes that are being made, and it's just getting a little complicated for everybody. And I think there's a lot of changes happening, people have been trying to make here, speed on this meeting. Things are getting a little complicated here a little bit.
Thank you, David. Any other public comments at this time? Yes, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Kathy Antea, Park Ridge Drive, Battle Creek. First, I just want to say thank you still for supporting the NPCs because ours is really rocking the house, and we're really excited about it. The city did a nice job printing some nice flyers, and we've been posting them around Urbendale. We really believe in the, the power of the NPCs, and we're trying really hard to get more people involved, and I hope all y'all are doing that in your local areas as well. Second of all, I promise that I, every week, every time you had a city commission meeting between now and November sixth, I'm gonna be standing in front of you reminding you that the Share Center is having a fundraiser on November sixth called Share for Share. We've finally gotten some printed materials available. I've only got a few, so I can't give them out, but I promise I'll bring them next time. We've got about fifty-six more days until our event is occurring. We did put in our application with the Gaming Commission and City of Battle Creek, so it's not at our facility, but it's a one-shot deal. We're having a really good raffle, and we're really thrilled that both Firekeepers and Doubletree have donated very generous packages to that raffle. So we're really hoping that all y'all will buy tickets from them because I'll have them probably in the next couple of meetings. Again, that fundraiser is called Share for Share, and it is November sixth, from six to eight P.M. We're finalizing all the details. And then finally, I also wanted to mention that I just had a wonderful conversation today with a gentleman who's worked all over south, what are we, southwest Michigan? Sorry, I'm from Detroit, so I always think I'm in southeast. From southwest Michigan, he's worked in a bunch of counties around here, and we had a really robust discussion regarding the housing millage that Kalamazoo County has, and what a lovely thing that is, and what great stuff they're doing that. Yes, please write this down, commissioners, the housing millage, and it may be some other fancy name, but in Kalamazoo County, they're using it for both homeless issues and, and solutions as well as for homeownership stuff. It's quite robust, it does a lot of different things, and I really would like to see Calhoun County consider something like that. I think that makes a ton of sense, especially considering that he actually felt that our groups that are functioning around the unhoused challenges as well as the housing challenges that we have, that we are fairly well organized as compared to other communities. So I felt, because I was thinking we were kind of behind the eight, not quite up to snuff, but he says, no, 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 we got it rocking. So I'm really excited about that, and I urge you to please look into that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, Autumn Smith?
Good evening. I want to express my deep concern regarding the recent conduct at this meeting today by Commissioner Simmons during public, during interactions. Specifically, I witnessed Commissioner personally attacking citizens by name-calling, which is not only unprofessional, but also undermines the trust and respect essential to our local government. This behavior creates a hostile environment for community members who are simply exercising their right to engage with elected officials. As outlined in the City of Battle Creek's Code of Ethics for City Commissioners, section two-one-two point oh five, elected officials are expected to uphold the highest standards of ethical conduct. The code explicitly states that commissioners must share fair and equal treatment of all persons, claims, and transactions coming before the Battle Creek City Commission and comply with laws and policies that promote an atmosphere of respect and civility. Furthermore, it prohibits actions that intimidate, humiliate, abuse others, emphasizing that public deliberations must be conducted openly and respectfully to maintain public confidence in government operations. Personal attacks and name-calling directly violate these principles as they fail to respect the public and erode the models of excellence the commissioners are pledged to follow. Such conduct not only breaches the code, but also contrives the spirit of Battle Creek City Charter, which calls the meaningful public involvement in policy deliberations. Elected officials are stewards of public interest and must model civility, especially when interacting with constituents. I urge this commission to address this manner promptly through appropriate review and training to ensure that all members adhere to these policies. Restoring a culture of respect will strengthen our community and rebuild our faith and leadership. The problem with that is, you guys did violate Robert's Rules of Orders, and John and I were trying to bring that up. I actually sided with Commissioner Simmons.
Ma'am, please address your comments to me, all right?
I am. Again, please stop cutting me off and interrupting me. That's a pattern that you seem to have too, and that's a violation of two-one-two point oh five also. I'm trying to make a point, you guys, the, the electronic voting failed. He was not allowed to log in. There was some sort of thing. There's three other options you have according to Robert's Rules of Order. You could take a verbal roll call, you could do a verbal stand-up thing, or you can do a hand raise. None of that was done. We were trying to bring that up because I didn't get to see the vote on the board like Mr. Kenefick or other people. I'm not saying that what Vicky said was wrong, but what I'm saying is, in the promotion of transparency, and when we were trying to raise that issue, the same issue he raised, he called us gadflies, he name-called us, and directly insulted us publicly. That's wrong, and it needs to be addressed and stopped. You want civility, you have to have it on both sides. And the fact of the matter is, we have more of a right to call you guys names in public office than you have us. I don't come up here and call public names. I may be very critical and stuff, and engage openly, but I never call names publicly like that. That was wrong, Mr. Simmons, and it's wrong for you to fail to address it, thank you.
You're done, thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Jeremy Cox, I live at Twenty Leech Drive. I just moved back to Michigan from St. Louis. I'm born and raised in southwest Michigan, and this is my first time living in Battle Creek. I've been trying to figure out where to go in order to fix my road. I live on the corner of Leech and Herald, back behind, I believe it's Columbia right there. And the road right there is absolutely awful. It's impeding traffic flow for emergency vehicles. It's impeding traffic flow for plow trucks are missing our streets. It's impeding a lot of stuff. I've talked to all of my neighbors, and they've had multiple issues.
What's the name of the road again?
Leech, L-E-I-T-C-H.
Yeah, it's a private road.
It's not a private road, sir.
Well, we went through it earlier this year.
No, the private road doesn't start until my neighbor's property halfway down the road itself.
Well, I'll have the city look at it, and we'll get back to you. But we had a call earlier this spring about the condition of that road, and we found out it was a private road. It's a dirt road, right?
It is a dirt road up at the front, yes, but that is still Battle Creek City.
Well, of course, it's in the city, but it's a private road.
The private road does not start until my neighbor's property, sir.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the city manager, and the city manager will get in contact with you, all right?
Okay, do you need my contact information?
Can you make it out on a card in the back of the room?
Okay, will do, I appreciate it, thank you. I look forward to your call.
Thanks. Any other public comment at this time? Yes, John?
John Kenefick, two thirty-four South Avenue. First of all, you did violate your own, your own rules of order here. If people can't see that, regardless of I'm here or no one else, no one knows what you did. And you decided in essence to cover that, even with a simple malfunction. You should have corrected, if you did not bother to do that. Now, my point of being up here right now is to talk about the caper that you approved, the report, which I have in my hands. And I find it very interesting because here it shows on the third page that the code department of the caper money gets three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars for this one year's time period. City administration, what goes along with that, comes with two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. If you do a count of the last approximate twenty-five years, you'll find that the City of Battle Creek has taken for the code department and administration about twenty-three million dollars. So that's a big chunk of that. Code is not paid for by the citizens of Battle Creek. However, after they have done this, this comes from federal funds. You have a lot of code officers and administration that are on pensions. That comes out of the public treasury of the city. There's a cost increase. You've got two other things listed here. One is Voices got thirty-five thousand dollars, and a childcare center, New Level Sports, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars? Is this what our taxpayers are supposed to be used for? And let's see, last but not least, I did have a question in regards to Habitat for Humanity. Up until a little while ago, I always thought Habitat went out and built their own houses from their own profit. But here it shows from what you've got coming up and what has happened, hundred and forty-three thousand dollars spent from this program for Twenty-Five North Woodland. We have Habitat for Humanity for two-seventy-three, West Spalding, another hoard, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Are they part of the system, getting this money from the caper money? I thought they did this by themselves. Now, are we supporting caper? And are we supporting Habitat? They don't have to do this anymore on their own? Because that's money paid by the federal dollars, and they're already bankrupt. If anybody doesn't know it, each of you owes, owes back to the city, to the federal government more than two and a quarter million dollars for each taxpayer for their overspending of their budget. And this is part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to commission comments. Commissioner Lacoste?
I just wanted to, I know most people already know about this, but there's a man that's been missing in Kalamazoo County, Dale Jacob Higley. If anyone sees him, to please call authorities. He went missing after a seizure in front of his daughter, and he was last seen on Half Mile Road and J-Drive South. So, and he was wearing jeans and either a white or orange tree service shirt. So please keep an eye out for him. He's been missing since September seventh, and we really want to make sure he gets home to his family.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to remind people, we're wearing green, some of us are for the, paint the town green for the support, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and thank you for that, doing that for our community and also for the nation of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. It just helps us allow the youth to know that they have mentors out there waiting for them to help them grow and support our community, so. The other thing is, is that this Saturday, there's an event for, it's called Ducks for Diabetes right here. It's a nice little cute poster. And there will be a little mini duck race, if you want to help support that. They'll be going down the Battle Creek River, and then there'll also be a human duck race, if you really want to support and jump in, get in there and help out with diabetes. And the funds go to diabetes for people that can't afford their medicines here in the area of Calhoun County. So I just wanted to let you know that. It'll be a really good fun event. That'll run from noon to four this Saturday, so if you want to come downtown and see an exciting event, come there, so. Just thank you, Battle Creek, for allowing me to represent you up here.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other comments for the commission? Hearing none, we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight. Thank you for attending tonight.